Good evening, everybody. I'm going to bring this meeting to order. Thank you for coming out. I would ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harris, call the oral members, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Ballantyne.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Grupera.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
And President Reichenbach.
Here.
Approval of the minutes for the February 26, 2019, meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Council comments from the public. Hearing on Mr. Harris. Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeau.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye.
Moving on to Proclamations, Honors, Awards, and Resolutions of Recognition.
We have none tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. And we'll move into our first public comment period for this evening. It's reserved for citizens who contacted the city clerk prior to tonight's meeting to request the opportunity to address city council. I would ask that commenters limit the duration of their comments to three minutes. Mr. Harris, who do we have this evening?
First tonight, Mr. President, we have Tammy Rojas.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Rojas.
Tammy Rojas, West Vine Street. Okay, so I want to start by saying a quote by Martin Luther King Jr. has been really resonating with me lately, especially since tackling the whole hospital issue. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Good evening, everyone. I'm Tammy Rojas, co-coordinator of the Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee with Put People First PA, and we are helping to lead the PA Poor People's Campaign: A National Call for Moral Revival. We are here tonight to address city council on the closing of UPMC Pinnacle Lancaster, voice our demands on this issue again, and bring important information to the public. Since last December, when the announcement of the closing of UPMC Pinnacle Lancaster was made, the Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee has worked tirelessly to bring attention to this issue by addressing city council, holding a rally outside the county government center, and holding a weekend of action where you were all invited, and Janet Diaz was present. Through our efforts here locally and from Put People First PA members across the state, we successfully made the invisible visible and caught attention from many across the entire country. We are not giving up. We will continue to hold UPMC and our elected officials accountable. Tonight, you will hear other members in the Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee share vital information that took place throughout 2017 that clearly shows UPMC's actions were and are immoral. As a charitable organization, they must, by law, put the community in which they serve first. We have started outreach to meet with state representatives and currently have two meetings scheduled. We reached out to the state attorney general's office Friday afternoon, told them briefly about the information we are sharing here tonight, and were told to expect a call back soon. We know city government has its limitations, but you are all not powerless. There are things you could do to help the situation versus what you so far have chosen to do. You could be more transparent and participatory on this issue. You could do a city resolution for a public healthcare advocate for the state. You could hold a public meeting with UPMC and demand the CEO and the executives show up. We asked you last December which side you're on, and your actions since then currently shows us that you have chosen to side with a corporation over the community you have been elected to represent. UPMC is hurting your people, and instead of being a champion and standing up, you choose to rub elbows with the very same people who are inflicting the suffering. So I want you to give a moment to the quote that I said at the beginning, because that's why this quote really resonates with me today. You know, the people want a champion. If we've learned anything since the 2016 presidential election, the people don't want politics as normal. They want somebody who's brave enough to stand up, especially stand up to a corporation, and that is clearly what we not have seen. You know, Lancaster County is actually in the middle of a healthcare crisis, especially when it comes to this hospital closing, but it doesn't stop there. If you look at an article recently that LNP put out with the report with the nursing homes, there was actually two deaths that occurred due to an accident with medications. Now, had things had been more adequate, you know, with staffing, with the proper, you know, requirements of the workers, you know, if they were not so overworked and overwhelmed, those kind of mistakes wouldn't happen. And if our current state of Pennsylvania had appropriate offices to take care of these situations, this wouldn't be occurring. And if you think it's only happening in Lancaster, it's not. It's happening everywhere. This is exactly why we need a public healthcare advocate.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harris, who do we have next this evening?
Yes, Mr. President. Next, we have Matthew Rosing.
Thank you. Evening, Mr. Rosing.
Good evening. Matthew Rosing, West Vine Street. Good evening, everyone. I'm a member of Put People First PA and the PA's Poor People Campaign: A National Call for Moral Revival. You have already heard a summary of why we're here. I'm going to share with you a timeline of events from 2017. Beginning in 2017, then-CEO of Pinnacle Health, Michael Young, suddenly resigned with only a comment of a career change, and media outlets expressed concern, wondering what was happening behind closed doors. Then, one week later, Philip, excuse me on the pronunciation, Garda Nchelli was given the position and his specialty is healthcare modernization and consolidation. Within about a month following the CEO change at Pinnacle, UPMC sends a letter of intent to strengthen business ties with Pinnacle Health. Pinnacle Health then purchases four hospitals: Carlisle, York, Lancaster City, and Lititz. UPMC then merges with Pinnacle Health, becoming UPMC Pinnacle. However, I must make clear that although they merge, all finances are under UPMC. After the merger, UPMC applied for a $750 million taxes and bond, standing to pay for purchases of the four hospitals and its renovations for the locations. By the fall of 2017, UPMC and partner Capital Blue Cross announced they were able to expand their insurance business thanks to the purchases of the four hospitals I mentioned a minute ago, because they gained the practices of the doctors affiliated with those four hospitals. In November 2017, LNP published an article about a pilot deal our local government made with UPMC. The entities that are part of the deal are the school district of Lancaster, Warwick School District, Lancaster City, and county government. Parts of the deal that were listed in that article are as follows. All four entities had to agree to a deal in order to go through with it. The deal itself is a five-year voluntary plan in lieu of taxes, which is not even enough to cover the community needs, so a difference of at least $200,000 is being made up by the community in tax dollars. The other part of the pilot deal, which is we find the most disturbing, is an agreement that all four entities would not challenge UPMC's tax-exempt status. UPMC has had their tax-exempt status challenged in the past by local government of Allegheny, and the local government there is still holding UPMC accountable, so they decide to be proactive in Lancaster, because they are already under scrutiny in another county. The Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee is here to demand the pilot be made public, and if it is, a possible link to it would be nice. The pilot should also have to be made, especially without, should not have been made without community input, seeing as we're the ones ultimately paying the price. We have the right to know the truth, and we demand transparency in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harris, who do we have up next?
Yes, Mr. President. Next is Ann Winslow.
Good evening, Ms. Winslow.
Hi, my name is Ann Winslow, and I live on Columbia Avenue. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Winslow, and I'm the co-coordinator of the Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee with Put People First PA and a member of the Poor People's Campaign: A Call for Moral Revival. As a chaplain in an urban, faith-based, Level One trauma hospital in Belkmore County, I've seen the importance that close proximity to a hospital can play in crisis situations and the health of patients and their families. Although the hospital's name may have been changed to Lancaster Regional and later UNPC Pinnacle Lancaster, the sanctity of life held to a higher standard in faith-based hospitals remain within both the walls of St. Joseph's and the community. This community has been traumatized by those who have participated in the pilot deal and have aided and abetted in the closing of the hospital. By participating in this action, you have put families of this community at risk for further trauma by taking away their neighborhood hospital. The Lititz location may be a mere seven miles, 20 to 30 car ride for you, but may cause those without cars to spend hours on one or more buses. Depending on where people are coming from, this may incur an expense of $6.10 for one trip to the hospital. More if they must take children over five years old or accompany a family member or loved one, and has made the visiting for those in the hospital an unaffordable luxury for many. Their situation has been exacerbated by your passing on the deficit of taxes not paid by UNPC on to us, those as community members who are already struggling to make ends meet. Since PPF has taken action, we've been deeply disturbed by the stories we've heard from around the entire county about the healthcare crisis being created by leaving Lancaster City with just one hospital. One man who had been shot sat for over an hour in the waiting room at LGH before leaving and was promptly treated at the former St. Joseph Hospital. On the day the hospital closed, Fox 43 reported that Jose Lugo, who had come to the hospital hoping to see his doctor and get a prescription filled, was met by locked doors. Mr. Lugo said he didn't know what he and his family would do now, because they were able to walk to St. Joseph's. They would now have to find a way and perhaps find money to pay for a bus or a taxi. Just this past week, a friend who lives in Leola went to LGH because she was in respiratory distress due to both congestive heart failure and leukemia. She was informed during her visit that the emergency room was operating at 122% capacity, that the wait for a bed in the ER was at least eight hours for most people, and she would have to wait at least 24 hours before she could get into a bed in the hospital. She was forced to choose between the lesser of two easels that the hospital staff gave her. One, stay in the ER for at least 24 hours to get the oxygen and breathing treatments she couldn't get at home, but take a chance of contracting another illness by being treated in the hall, or go home, take diuretics, and hope that enough liquids would be drained from her body to make breathing easier while constantly being monitored and brought back if her condition worsened. She chose to go home. Your entering the pilot deal is akin to entering a deal with the devil and has resulted in the closure of both a spiritual and healthcare icon in the community. Put People First demands of this deal and its participants be exercised to regain a sense of responsibility to your community, meet our demands, and partner with us. We will not stop fighting until we take back St. Joseph's and return it to the communities that built it with our blood, sweat, and tears.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harris, do we have anybody else this evening?
Yes, Mr. President. We also have Terry Brown.
Mr. Brown, good evening, sir.
Terry Brown, what's testing? Now, UNPC. Now, the mayor is not worrying about UNPC be shut down, and there's only one person up on the city council board, it's Ms. Diaz, is the only person that's sticking up for UNPC. And none of you are saying nothing or doing nothing. But the mayor told UNPC on February 16 that she don't have no authorities under this matter. If she don't have no authorities with UNPC, guaranteed, she don't have no authorities right here in city council. She could be a mayor for Lancaster City and don't tell UNC she don't have no authorities? I know the rules and regulations, she don't have no authorities here in this matter. Now, can you explain that to me, Mr. Ross, about authorities? Can you explain that?
Mr. Brown.
No, okay, that's what I said. She's not someplace else. She said she don't have no authorities on this matter. Yes, she does have authority on this matter, 250 Lancaster City, and she's a mayor for Lancaster City. She need to wake up and be a mayor for Lancaster City, for UNPC, because a thousand people and thousands of lives are gone. I want, does she care or does she worry about? Because when she said that, I don't got nothing to do with this matter, right, and I don't have no authority under this matter, I mean, that's telling you, if the people would know about that, they're right, it'd be serious trouble. If they could get out for her second term, she ain't going to get it, because a thousand people, lives are gone. But she need to wake, if she's a mayor for Lancaster City and her body need to wake up, smell coffee the right way. And on the second thing, why did you vote for the Marriott Motel and you knew as a private organization? Now, okay, like I told you before, the Marriott Motel is private, and UNPC is private. So what's any difference between the Marriott Motel and UNPC? What's any difference? Now, how come the Marriott did not come to city council in 12 years when Rick Ray was here? The Marriott knew how to get a yes, 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 yeah from everybody. A new mayor don't know a damn thing about the city council. People on there, there's two people out there know about the Marriott Motel inside and out. Two people on city council board right now know everything about the Marriott Motel. And I know about inside, the Marriott Motel inside and out, but I ain't saying nothing. But see, hey, the mayor don't know nothing about the Marriott Motel. Like I said, private is private. Now, why she worrying about the Marriott Motel, but telling UNPC she don't got no authorities? Private is private. Don't matter what you say, if you're private, you're private. The Marriott Motel is a private organization. UNPC is a private organization. Why she ain't saying, why she ain't sticking up for UNPC, but she sticking up for Leicester Marriott Motel? Something don't sound right between the mayor and the people. And you up there voting, that's why I got up to elect, because I knew all the thousand dollars said to you, right? I wonder, do Western Fargo knows about all that money they're saying? Because you're still in the black. Marriott Motel is still in the black. They just got out of red last year. They just got out of red last year, they're in the black, and you're saying all this money, this money, this money. How come they do the right thing?
I ask you to finish.
Okay, I'm saying, because I'm saying, for, Mr. Ross, you got authorities, but you just don't use it. And you say, like I say, what I say, you told them you don't want nothing to do with this matter. That's what they told me clearly, because I went up there and I flash a shield right in front of their face.
Mr. Brown, can you?
Okay. I'm prepared in that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it. Any other individuals called Evans Harris?
No, it was the President, they've not.
Okay. Thank you. We will move on to reports requested by council. I believe we have Chief Berkeyhauser here this evening to brief us on 2018 civilian police complaints. Good evening, chief. Good to see you, sir.
So, good evening, distinguished members of council, and the Honorable Mayor Sarachi. Tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity to discuss the overall performance of our bureau staff, as well as our recruitment efforts going into 2019. Police Bureau responded to approximately 55,000 calls for service in 2018. That number does not include contact with the public that is not enforcement-related. So we go to a lot of community meetings, work with our SROs at McCaskie and each middle school in the city, our police athletic league program, and general conversation with residents, businesses, and business leaders on a daily basis. Likely, we can double that number to over 100,000 interactions with the public on a regular basis. Conservatively, let's say there were 80,000 community contacts in 2018. On average, our officers are interacting with the public approximately more than 200 times per day in between report-writing meetings and responding for calls for service. This is just to provide council with the scope of work our police officers are charged with on a daily basis. There were a total of 20 civilian complaints received and investigated in 2018. Each investigation was conducted by the Professional Standards Office, or a sergeant or lieutenant assigned to one of the three divisions within the police bureau. 18 complaints were determined to be unfounded, not sustained, or the officer was exonerated. Two complaints resulted in disciplinary action, one including termination, which occurred at the beginning of this year. While there's been a lot of conversation about civilian complaints, the bureau does not just rely on complaints to address the conduct of our police officers or our civilian staff. Supervisory staff, as part of their day-to-day duties in our operations, are required to ensure that officers and civilian staff are adhering to bureau policies and city policies and acting in accordance with our values of our profession. Our disciplinary action is used to change behavior of an employee and is used in a progressive manner if an employee continues to willfully or recklessly violate policy, and up to including termination. Action takes place after administrative investigation that may involve our Professional Standards Office, our bureau supervisors, or the city human resources. And we provide these employees with their applicable rights under their collective bargaining agreements. During 2018, there were a total of 27 officers who received disciplinary actions. This includes 23 written reprimands, four suspensions without pay, and those suspensions ranged anywhere from eight hours up to several days. One personnel transfer because the employee needed closer supervision and more structure in the work environment. We also issued two last-chance agreements. These employees were provided with notice that if they commit any serious policy violations in the near future, they will be terminated, and those last-chance agreements were agreed to by the unions. And like I said before, we had one termination. We also have a system in place that we call knock and boost. It's kind of a funny term, but knock is for anything that may be a violation, a small violation of policy or a performance issue. This process is used by supervisors to track minor performance issues and positive performance throughout the year for the purposes of annual performance evaluations. There were also 39 minor documented performance issues, so this is substandard work product, demeanor or attitude, or a policy or procedure violation, where supervisors counsel the employee, or it could turn into more of a formal progressive discipline process. This is often used to document paperwork or report-writing deficiency, showing up late for shift briefing, condition of issued equipment, their uniforms, minor vehicle accidents, and those kinds of things. Also during 2018, there were 113 positive comments, or what we call "boos," registered in our tracking software. The majority of these comments came from members of the public or Lancaster residents. And additionally, 35 officers received formal commendations for their outstanding work through 2018. So for 2018, we commended 148 officers throughout the year. I'd also like to share some data regarding the bureau's use of force over the last year. So for 2018, there were 226 use-of-force incidents and police use force to detain or arrest an individual. A use-of-force report is generated any time an officer uses any force above verbal direction by order of a supervisor or there is a complaint of injury. The police bureau makes approximately 4,000 to 5,000 arrests per year, so force is used about 4.5% of the time that officers are making arrests. And that 4.5% is on the national average. So what we learned through our de-escalation training is 3% to 5% of individuals that we're dealing with in a crisis situation cannot be talked down from that crisis situation when we have to use force to make an arrest. So we're right in line with that national average. Finally, I'd like to share some data regarding our recruitment and hiring. This has been a topping among police leadership for decades, as our need is great. As you know, our bureau participates in a county-wide testing consortium every year. The consortium provides a standardized testing process for all the police agencies in Lancaster County. It provides applicants the ability to test for each agency while only paying one fee for the test, rather than paying several fees to take several different tests. It also provides a significant cost savings to all the police agencies involved, because we pay one fee to get into the consortium and that's it, rather than paying thousands of dollars on an annual basis to run our own test. We saw a significant drop in the number of applicants in 2018 from 2017. That went from 410 to 322. Of those 322 applicants that applied to take our test, the consortium test, only 220 showed on the test date. Of that 220 who tested, 121 applicants passed the test. 19 city residents and one county resident attended test prep classes that were organized by former chief of staff Matt Johnson. Of those 20 individuals, seven out of the 20 applied for the test but never showed to take the test. Four out of the 20 never applied to take the test, so that's over half of that group. So over half the group never took the test. Of the nine remaining candidates, five received a passing score. One candidate is currently in the background process. The other four candidates were disqualified for lying on their application or on the questionnaire, extensive drug history, current outstanding warrants for their arrest, and domestic violence concerns. Testing and recruiting for 2019, Lancaster County Chiefs of Police Consortium opens the application process in May of 2019. The test will take place on September 7th and 8th, usually the weekend after Labor Day every year. We are looking for assistance in test preparation services. There's been an offer from the NAACP to assist in recruiting efforts and in test preparation. Our community outreach section will be directly involved in the recruiting process. They'll be attending larger block parties throughout the city, attending career fairs, which is something we've always done for decades, and other larger community events. We have recruiting pamphlets and posters being finalized in both English and Spanish, and we're working with the agency that we use for the online testing application process, policeapp.com, on additional recruiting methods over social media. And we're also looking to city council and any other community organizations that are willing to assist us in our recruiting efforts. Recruiting is a concern among police leaders across the country. Being a police officer is a noble profession, and we are few. There is no other profession in the country where you can stop and play basketball with kids in the neighborhood for one minute, provide lifesaving care to an overdose victim the next minute, and later on that day respond to a shooting or stabbing in progress where you may have to make a life-changing decision. This profession requires a special person to step forward and assume the responsibility to step into danger on a regular basis, remain empathetic, and treat people with respect. And when officers do this, policing is the most rewarding job anyone can have. This is not just a job, it is a calling. The population of the United States is about 327 million, and there are only 600,000 to 700,000 uniformed police officers across the country. Those numbers are dropping steadily, and we are not seeing the interest we once did in this profession for a variety of reasons. In Lancaster, we are not ready to declare an emergency related to our staffing levels, although to continue to provide the level of service, of professional service we are right now, we need more people to apply for this police department. So I'm looking to council, and like I said, other members of the community, for help. I know many of you probably know people who fit this profile, and I would encourage you to encourage them to take the test.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, chief. Any questions from council members while we have the chief here?
Yes, I did have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
In reference to the police officer that was let go.
Yes, ma'am.
What exactly occurred? Like, I mean, I don't know if that's a right to know, but was it related to anything that publicly was actually in the newspaper, anything of that sort?
I believe some of the information was in the newspaper. I, you know, I can't in open forum discuss specifics of personnel-related matters, but I can tell you it was connected to a criminal investigation that we received information about and we turned it over to the district attorney's office immediately. And then our administrative investigation, along with their criminal investigation, led to charges and the officer's termination.
And in regards to recruiting, Lieutenant Hickey, is he the one that actually does the recruiting? the recruiting?
So we have Lieutenant Hickey. It used to be our Professional Standards Office, they were also our community relations. After the first of the year, I made some changes, so Professional Standards is just Professional Standards. I created a community outreach section, which is Lieutenant Hickey, Sergeant Dorsey Summerall, who supervises our SROs and our POW program, and Sergeant Donald Moran. So Sergeant Donald Moran has been working closely with Millsy from a community outreach aspect. So they're gonna, all three of them, are gonna be in charge of our recruiting process. Plus, we're also engaging younger officers within the department to go on these recruiting trips to different career fairs, so they can talk about what the job is like.
And you're centering yourself in Pennsylvania in order to recruit, or would you expand? Because I just, for some reason, Lieutenant Hickey had mentioned that you were looking to expand possibly like to Delaware, Washington, to bring in, to recruit.
So we do, our, once we have a job announcement, it goes out on the web. So any police-related site that has police-related jobs, job postings, our positions go on there. In addition to, we wanted to get involved in more of a grassroots level, because we're trying to get more city residents to apply, so that's why we also want to focus more locally. We do college and career fairs as far away as Philadelphia, I believe we did New Jersey and Delaware also, and we're trying to focus on some of the major metropolitan areas in those states. If we can steal police officers away from some of these larger police departments, you know, I'm all for it, because they're coming to us with a certain level of experience.
I just reached out to my cousin in the 52nd precinct in New York City, and I just told him, you know, if you have any officers out there.
Cost of living's cheaper here.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you so much for your.
Sure.
Do you find that any of the previous year applicants that don't pass come back in following years to apply again?
So we have had repeat applicants, and unfortunately, some of the issues that they've had in their past, we can't overcome. You know, there are certain issues, domestic violence being one of them, we can't overlook that. Lying on an application, or throughout the process, or failing a polygraph examination are difficult things to overlook. And what a lot of people don't realize is even if they have a reaction, we call it failing a polygraph, it's a reaction on a polygraph. We actually try and reconcile that reaction. So they could be thinking about something totally, not even connected to the test or the question on the test, something that's going on in their life, and we try and reconcile that before we consider it an actual failure.
Do you think that the year-over-year decrease in applicants is a trend that will continue?
I'm hoping it's not. I certainly don't. I mean, you know, there's a variety of reasons why this, we're seeing this declining trend. Some of it's, some of the criticism and demonization of the profession on social media and national media, but also, you know, when the economy's good, public service is not the most inviting job. I mean, you know, you're asking people to put their lives in danger for $1,000 a year, and, you know, some people aren't up for that. Thank you. Sure.
Counselor?
Counselor Valentine answered, or asked one of my questions. The other one would be, what is the minimum age that someone can apply?
So for us, we're asking them to be 21 by the time they graduate the police academy. Because in Pennsylvania, you have to be 21 years of age to possess a firearm, so we issue a firearm, and you're taking it home with you. So they can apply to take the test for at least our department at 20 years old. As long as they're 21 by the time they graduate the academy, we're fine with it.
And how long is the academy?
Approximately five months.
Five months. Thank you.
Sure.
Chief, as far as the point scores that you get from tests, you know, sometimes they, if you're a local resident, if you're ex-military, you get extra points for that. Do you think that comes in as a hindrance for local applicants?
I think the way the civil service is structured now, I think it evens the playing field a little bit more. You know, a veteran can get 10 points on the test. Other applicants, if they're a city resident, if they're bilingual, could actually earn up to nine points. So I think it evens the playing field from the civil service perspective. And a veteran can't get more than 10 points, so they don't qualify for all the other points that we have available.
And do you feel the disparity in the different cultures within the community, whether you're Hispanic, whether you're African-American, whatever, does that, do you get more positive feel from the applicants that way, or no?
I'm not sure how to, what I can tell you is, the best way I can answer that question is the diversity of a police department. That has been an ongoing debate for the 25 years that I've been in law enforcement, on how to, how a police department can more represent the community that they serve. And I don't think anybody has the best answer. I wish I did, because I could probably make a considerable amount of money as a consultant doing so. But, you know, there really isn't. I can't tell you, I wish I had the magic answer, but I don't. When, and just to give you some information, out of the 220 applicants that showed up to take the test this last year, probably less than 12% were people of color. So, you know, and one of the things that we're looking at is, is there a better way that we can market the police department? Mayor and I have had that conversation time and time again. I've never, never thought about having to market, you know, public service or a police department, but I think that's where we're at right now. And that's what we tried to do the last go-around, by trying to show what the community is like in our recruitment video, in addition to what the job is like.
Out of those 12%, how many made the final cut?
That I couldn't tell you, because, you know, honestly, the information, Police Apps does not capture race and ethnicity. It's an optional question, and I honestly, I think it's missed in the online application process. So for us to look at a list of names, we don't have that information readily available to us.
Thank you, chief.
Sure.
And, chief, as a guy who has gray hair, I'm just curious, what's the maximum age? Not even making a joke, but I think a lot of times we assume, you know, we're targeting younger people to get them in early and have them come the whole way through, but, you know, in times of crisis with people that might be willing to change jobs or look to change jobs, is there a level that you'd like to cap it at, or that is kind of called for capping?
So we can't cap it, so, you know, in my career, we actually hired a 45-year-old gentleman, and I think we hired one that was in his lower 50s. The only issue they have is they're not going to be able to retire with a full pension, because we have a mandatory retirement age at 60.
Okay.
So.
But that doesn't necessarily preclude people. If it's not a pension concern and they want to join the department, that would be something that would rule them out?
Yeah, they still, they'll still actually be able to retire with, you know, a partial pension, it just won't be a full pension. So it'll be a fraction of, you know, whatever the pension is. And, you know, I always say, with an applicant that's applying to this job after 30 years of age, you have to make sure this is exactly what you want to do, because it is a young man's game. We are, although we are a small city, we do have, you know, urban crime, we do have, we do have some issues in the city from time to time. So this isn't a young man's job, so.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Any other questions? I appreciate your time, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure.